Been involved in youth sports in the school district and a lot of community events and things like that. So we're excited to get him over there. He's a good fit for the position. And get him some, some extra experience kind of dealing with the schools and things like that for the time being. But looking forward to having Deputy Zemack back. That's, that's a passion of his. So we're looking forward to that for him. Now, speaking of schools, we have some traffic enforcement details coming up. We're going to be focusing and targeting the school zone over on Cottonwood in particular. And they're around Cottonwood Farm District. So we would encourage people to drive more cautiously over there. There will be an increased law enforcement presence in those areas during the school zone hours for the foreseeable future. We have some other traffic enforcement details that are going to be going on around the city. In particular, the stoplight over at Newlands, I understand the issue over there. And we've been out doing some, some observation on that with traffic backing up across Newlands and Main Street there. And people run the red light and some of those things. So we're going to go out and do some traffic enforcement in that area as well as over at Main Street and the stoplight there. And just try and get people to actually obey where the lines are at, what's going on with the lights. And see if we get some of that traffic issue sorted out. Know it's an issue. I know there's a ton of traffic enforcement's going to be a challenge over there. But we're going to do the best we can try and, try and get those situations sorted out. I had some meetings with the state police regarding both those intersections also because it is a cross jurisdiction area. They're going to participate in some of the enforcement there also and help increase the presence in those areas. And until we can see some improvement on the, on the traffic on that end. Have a deputy Jose Vasquez, he's back up in Fernley. He was down helping out in Mason Valley for a little bit over the summer. He's back up this way. So people may see him back out and around. He's often tagged as a, like our 21 Jump Street cop. He looks like he's about 16 years old. He's not. He has a lot of experience, been with us for, for quite some time now. So people may see him around. He's super nice, nice guy. Would encourage people to go talk to him, welcome him back to Fernley as he's come back up this way. One of the nice things that we have here in Fernley in particular is we'll see a deputy go working in another part of the county. For a little bit or go help out detectives or something like that. And they're always looking to come back up this way. They appreciate all the community support and working here in the city. And he was one of those guys that got down, worked his first shift down helping out the guys in Mason, called me up and said, hey, when can I come back? I'm ready to be back up in Fernley. So. We're doing some work on crime stats right now. The state breach has caused a significant amount of problems with that. All the reporting mechanisms crashed in that breach. And so we're waiting for that system to get back online. All the reporting's been put on hold. So we have some reporting that goes back to like mid-May sometime. Just cases that hadn't been closed or were still in follow-up stats, things like that. When the breach happened and we haven't been able to report those things. We're mostly caught up through about July, but now we're coming into the fall. So the records folks are very, very busy trying to get all that stuff caught up and get it ordered in a way that they can input that data. So we have realistic crime reporting to both the state and federal databases. So if people are looking at that stuff, those numbers that are on there right now are not accurate. They're, they're missing a whole bunch of information. That process really looks like we report to the state, the state reports to the feds. So if you're looking on that FBI crime stats, there's an even bigger lag there between what we have and what's been reported to the state and up. We did take a look internally at our crime stats and trends. Everything looks like it's, it's trending down right now. Property crimes and violent crimes are all trending down. Particularly over the last like two years or so. And that trend has continued. We're not seeing any real increases there. The one thing I would say about all of that reporting mechanism is the way that the state and federal government report crimes and record crimes is much, much different than the way that we view them on a local level. They lump things into very big categories. So for instance, we were looking at like reporting of sexual assault data. Those numbers look insane when you look at them on their website. They're very, very, very high. But the way that the federal government reports those things, a whole bunch of stuff that's not actually a sex assault falls into that category and gets reported that way under the new system. The, the old unified crime reporting system doesn't exist anymore. It's all under a system called NiBRS now. And I mean, we could go way down that rabbit hole, but probably not productive this evening. But I would be happy to brief you guys on it if anybody has any questions about that or things that are going on, specific areas around town. But generally speaking, we're seeing crime trend down, not seeing as much violent crime or property crime, particularly here in the city of Fernley. That being said, we're still seeing a ton of arrests, ton of traffic stops, ton of proactive law enforcement activity around. Our drug arrests and things like that are still trending up as we're increasing proactive law enforcement efforts. And some of the saturation events and things like that, we are making a lot more arrests and, and doing a lot more of that, that type of enforcement work. So you're not going to see like the bookings on Monday morning fall off drastically based off what we're talking about. More of the reporting of some of those more major crimes, which is what the state and federal government's focused on. If there's any specific crime related questions, generally I can answer those with a little bit of research and some help with the records folks. And I'd be happy to do that. We have a couple deputies over at the academy in Carson City. It's going well. They're, they're performing very well on that end. They're done long about mid-November. And they'll be back this way and we'll see a couple more deputies up here in Fernley. Backfilling some of the positions that we helped move around to help cover some of the rest of the county. So that'll be sorted out in about mid-November. At that point in time, our patrol division is all certified once those guys get back. And we will be looking to send some people from the jail and start prepping certifications. So we don't see the lags on the backend like we do now where when we hire somebody, they have to go to the academy and get certified and then go to field training. And we see about an eight month lag time between when we hire and when they come to the road. We're going to start trying to get pre-certified folks in the jail. So that when we hire people, they can go to detention facility and we can pull those certified people out. And we can cut down that lag time and getting people trained and out on the road. So some light at the end of the tunnel. As far as the hiring stuff goes, we are fully staffed. I think we swear in our last open position on Monday at this time. Guys, a, a will be a category one certified officer who's coming to us from the New York Police Department. We'll probably see him up here in Fernley for a pretty good amount of time. A little bit of culture shock. He works in a, a one square mile block that has 160,000 people in it in New York right now. And coming out to, to Fernley is going to be a pretty big change for him. But we're looking forward to it, looking forward to some of the experience and different viewpoint that he could bring us from, from out there. And then a couple of special events we have coming up. We have the Beef and Brews event, which is held down in Yarrington. It's a fundraiser for the first responders benefit. They do fundraising for all the law enforcement and fire districts in the county. And basically they raise money and then we work with them to further different programs around for both us and the fire department, police department down south. One of the big things that they've helped us with funding for is like the junior deputy program. They've done most of the fundraising for that program and, and helped us out getting some of those things up and running. So we would encourage people to go out to that. It's a fun event. They do beer testing, beer tasting and steak dinner and all sorts of things down, down in Yarrington. We will be here at the Spooktacular Halloween on the 31st. We're looking forward to that. Always a great event for us. We try and put a bunch of presents down here. So we will be here at City Hall for that one. And then we have the Shop of the Sheriff event coming up in mid-December. We are doing fundraising for that. If anybody would like to donate or has a kid that they think may be a good candidate to participate in that event. Please reach out to us. We would like to, to get everybody involved that we can. Last year we had 40 kids that we were able to pair up with a deputy and do some Christmas shopping with. Make sure that they had all the things they need to have a Merry Christmas. And we're looking to expand that this year. So we're hoping to have as many kids as we can. And, and that all starts on the fundraising side right now. That means I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't really have a question, but I, I do have a comment. And you know, you said something that really hit home when you said that the crime is down. And I think the reason the crime is down is because the presence of the Lyon County Sheriff's Department in Fernley. It's, it's really evident that you guys are everywhere up here now. So I want to say thank you from the city of Fernley for, for making it a safer place. So I appreciate you. Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief Deputy. So it's good to see you. Welcome back. I just also wanted to echo the sentiments of the mayor. You know, traffic was in our top five, the highest complaints that we get here. And it's been night and day difference, crime, of course. You guys have just tackled it. I love all the saturation events and it's really making a difference. So I want to thank you and be safe out there.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Zabrowski.
I'll stay sane, but I am curious about how the, the numbers work. Because if our deputies are out and we're, you know, arresting a lot more people and stuff. I'm confused about how the crime is, is down because we're out there. So it's obviously a problem because we're having so much more arrests coming in. I don't know. I'm like picturing it as kind of a catch 22 because we have more people being arrested. But if we have more people being arrested, then there's an issue, right? Because that means there's a lot more crime happening.
Sure. So it doesn't necessarily mean there's more crime happening. The crime happens anyway.
Right.
We're, we're more engaged with the criminal activity today than we have been in, in times past. The other thing when we talk about like crime reporting data, a lot of what they're looking at is specific criminal acts that, that are reported and analyzed. And that's why I say they look at it on a lot different level of the federal and state level than we do locally. The NiBRS system realistically is a headache for everybody involved in it. Because one of the things our, our deputies have to do is they go out and they take a report. And they have to figure out what that's called under the state laws, NRS or the municipal codes. And then translate it to what the state or federal government calls it.
Oh, that makes sense. Cause there could be like multiple crimes for this one category.
There could be. And for instance, one of the things that was, has always been a note to me when we look at, at crime data is they don't track domestic violence, which is a huge portion of what we do. And it's not reported or tracked at any state or federal level.
Not tracked at all?
As far as NiBRS reporting goes, they track it in other means, but not through those systems. So like if you go on the, the FBI's crime reporting website, you won't see it anywhere on there. Which has always been a concern to me because it is one of the most significant things that we deal with. It's one of the most impactful to our community. It's one of the most dangerous response calls that both our, our fire districts and our law enforcement officers respond to. And it's not represented anywhere in the federal reporting data that, that we submit.
That's scary.
Just one example of, of how that works. They look at a lot of things like the violent crime data consists of like four components. It's homicide, robbery, aggravated assault and sexual assault. And so everything funnels into those four categories. And there's a whole bunch of things that don't funnel into them at all. So one of the things that we were looking at as we were going through some of this data is we've seen an uptick in aggravated assault. Why is that? Well, because it's being reported differently. At the end of the day, and so if something could cause a substantial injury, it's supposed to be reported as an aggravated assault. Well, in years past, it was only reported if it actually did cause a substantial injury. So as that guideline got changed and moved and the reporting changed to alter the way that was reported. Of course we saw an increase in those because things that could cause a substantial injury obviously happened far more often than things that actually do cause a substantial injury. So just some examples of why we see that disparity sometimes. The other thing that is not reported or accounted for in that federal crime reporting is drug related offenses. And so as we're out doing more drug enforcement on the patrol side and making more arrests there, you'll see our arrest numbers go up. But you won't see any reflection of that in the crime day report by the federal government.
Okay. I don't know if that makes me feel better or worse.
So, so it realistically.
I understand what you're saying.
Realistically, it, it doesn't affect you or our citizens on any level because we're still out doing the enforcement. We're still locating those things. Whether the state or federal government reports those things or collects data on it. Realistically isn't very relevant because it doesn't change the job that we're doing. It doesn't change what we see on the street every day or what we know is going on in our communities or our response to it.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm super confident in Lyon County Sheriff's Office. I'm just, I'm trying to picture how I would, you know, see the stats at the end of the year and go, okay, how many of these are actually what the, you know, what they're delegated to and not what actually happened. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So probably the best way to do that is in our annual report, we break down what's actually going on here. We want, you know, an example that we noticed, we had like 12 larcenies reported or something like that to, to the state. Well, obviously far more than 12 people committed larceny in Lyon County. So at the end of the year, we actually go into our reporting data and pull those numbers out and report what we actually have on our end in the annual report. And so you'll see a big disparity there. If you look at like some of the past reports I've given you and you were to go on to the, the federal or state reporting sites, you would see a, a big disparity between the two. Just based off that alone is we're going to tell you what we actually have, what the NRS actually says, what is being forwarded to District Attorney's Office for prosecution. Things like that versus what's being reported to the state or federal level.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Hey, thanks for being out here. Question for you. When we work on Cottonwood, is there any plans on working on Hardy? I've noticed during the afternoon pickup that traffic is extremely impeded southbound on Hardy. And they're not letting anybody go because they all want to make a right turn and they literally stopped the traffic there for about 15 or 20 minutes until the bell rings and people start picking up kids. They yelled at us in a fire rig, trying to get past them. Cause we got stuck in that traffic and sat there for over 10 minutes one day. And I was just wondering if you guys have been getting any complaints on that? If you guys are going to be kind of showing up and telling them to stop and beating traffic and keep that flow moving.
Yeah. So that, the situation over on Hardy's been a constant problem for probably, I don't know, at least since before I was working up here in Fernley, probably the last five or 10 years, it's been an issue over there. We sit down with the school with Councilman Torres, what's that been, two or three years ago? And we worked through some different options for moving traffic through there. One of the concerns I have with doing enforcement over there is if we send deputies over to try and conduct traffic stops on people that are sitting in the roadway there, we're going to cause a substantial mess in terms of trying to move traffic out of the way, trying to get a vehicle stopped in a safe location. And it, it's one of those things where we have to weigh, are we creating more of a hazard by conducting the stop versus allowing the traffic to function the way that it is? We have been over there doing some enforcement and I had Sergeant Santos go sit over there every day for about three weeks and just try and keep some notes on what we had going on, do stops for some of the egregious violations. I mean, we had reports of vehicles traveling through that school zone at 70 plus miles an hour. We weren't able to confirm any of that. The, the highest speed that we had was about 32 miles an hour through there. The problem with 32 miles an hour, when everybody else has stopped is it is very fast, especially in a 15 mile an hour zone. So they have been out doing some enforcement on that. And we're going to continue to do enforcement over there. It is on the, on the list of target areas for some upcoming enforcement. As far as making any progress on not having people stop there, I don't know that we're going to make any real progress. We could go out and issue some citations for it. But in terms of actually correcting the issue, I don't know that we're going to make any headway on it through those means. I think we're going to have to go about it through a diversion of traffic differently through the, through the parking lot over there or a different pickup location. Or I, I think we have some options with it. But ultimately we have to get a different level of cooperation from the, the school over there before that's going to happen. And, and not to say the school hasn't been cooperative. They've been great to work with to try and come up with a solution there. But I don't think there's an easy solution to that situation.
Yeah, I've seen people go on oncoming to bypass it. And school people like jump in the middle of the street to try to stop them. Yeah. And it's, I mean, even if we just put a sign up right there, it says do not impede traffic or keep traffic moving. And because it, it stacks, I don't know if you've seen it, but it stops at the gate and starts stacking up to Main Street. With no movement whatsoever until the bell rings. And it's, I, I find it a hazard being both ways. I get the, you know, the enforcement portion and, excuse me, create an hazard. But then you got the stall of traffic taking place and people are just stacking up on that road. But I just wanted to bring it up. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, I was going to say too, what Councilman Mendoza is talking about too, is I think just the presence of Lyon County sitting there in a car keeps that traffic moving because now you're there and they know that if they're creating a traffic violation, they're going to get pulled over. So that might just be, I, I don't know how it worked for the three weeks where he sat there and watched it. But I would imagine that the traffic moved a little bit better than when you're not present.
So I think the bigger benefit that we got from that is we didn't have the people trying to go wrong way around the, the enforcement zone there with the patrol car sitting there. As far as the traffic stacking up, we had little to no effect on that, just with the patrol car there. And you know, if we go out and they start issuing a bunch of citations. We're going to have a whole different set of issues, I think. And we've had a lot of feedback. We've had some community meetings regarding that situation. One of the suggestions that I got from on the SROs is maybe a staggered release or something at the school over there can maybe help alleviate some of the traffic. I think that that's an interesting solution to that situation. But it causes other problems. You have multiple kids that go to school there and now they're on a staggered release.
It's a bus problem, what it is when they try to stagger, stagger, you know, the elementary grades.
Right.
Then it becomes a bus problem busting them. And, and yeah, so it's a messy.
Yeah, we start trading one problem for another problem. And he said, we're going to go do some, some more enforcement out in that area. But if, if anybody has an easy solution to it, we're, we're happy to hear it.
Councilwoman Zabrowski.
I just, I have a daughter that's at FES. And if it's any consolation, once traffic does start getting a little, well, I'm sure you know Ms. Choi and she's, she's a force. But they do send out like an automated message to the parents, reminding them the way that traffic is supposed to move. So I don't know if we, you know, kind of suggest something to them or, but they do send out like a recorded message saying, just a reminder, you can't park here or you can't take this left turn. And so when it does start getting a little bit bad like that, I know that the school is super aware of it, but I don't think that they have an easy solution either. But they do. So I don't know if that's something that Lyon County can get with the school with on to, you know, be a part of that recorded message or something that they send out to all the parents that have kids at school there. But they have tried a ton of different solutions. They tried, you know, the big highlighter piece of papers that you hang in your window and they grab your kid and they toss them in your car and then you go on your way. I mean, they, they have definitely tried a ton of different solutions. We just, it's, it's a tiny road and there's a lot of kids. But I just wanted to make the comment that the school is, it definitely actively trying to mitigate it. They just haven't found, haven't found it yet.
I appreciate that. That's our experience also. They've, they, like I said, they've been great to work with. And they've been open to trying a whole bunch of different things that, that we've suggested over the years. And we just have not hooked up on a, a great solution to that situation yet. So we're going to keep working on it. We're not going to give up on it.
All right. Thank you. Well, if there's no further questions, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks.
Do we have anybody from North Lyon County Fire Department? Nobody from school board? All right, let's start our reports. Councilman Mendoza, would you like to start? Or let's go with Acting City Manager Lydia Altek first.
Good evening. I do have a few announcements. I just want to give a shout out to five new employees that started in September. We got Zachary Whaley, Maintenance Worker One Streets. Sydney Velisca, Admin Specialist One, Public Works. Kiara Italiano, Project Manager Engineering. Jacob Beasley, Meter Technician and Sierra Hami, Meter Technician Utilities. Brief update on the raised grant, not a whole lot to report, but the 30% plans have been reviewed by NDOT and Union Pacific Railroad and approved. 60% plan sets should be out any day. Still on schedule for construction to start in spring of 2027. Just to update, the city has quite a few requests for proposals out there. And I'll just give you a quick update on those. The IT for IT co-manage, co-managed service provider that closed on Friday and we received three proposals. And so we're hoping to have a contract for council approval in November. Friday is the last day for the city's RFP for Assessment Engineer Consultant for the Nevada Pacific Parkway Special Assessment District Project. Third one, Public Works has three RFPs out. Facilities Master Plan, Enterprise Asset Management Software and Cemetery Master Plan. It's exciting stuff. Planning Department has received eight proposals for an update to the comprehensive master plan. So those are in, in review right now. Got a good news. The, all the CDBG funds have been spent for the Main Street beautification improvements. So that was about $60,000 improvements at the Main Street Art Park and Polaris Plaza. Were installed at the Main Street Art Park. We have the walkway, which is still to be completed, but planters, benches, art installations. Also with donations from Twisted Steel and Aces and of course the sign. Polaris Plaza, we got some benches, planners, a bike rack, landscaping. And we relocated the sign and put some landscaping around that as well. The city's goal is to complete the connection for the walking path at the Main Street Art Park eventually. That will connect the existing business air, side of town and sidewalk. And it also creates an interesting place to observe art and eventually sit in the shade. So those structures are being planned. And there's more on that probably next month. We'll have an update on that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Let's go with the council reports. Councilman Mendoza.
Nothing to report this evening.
Councilman Torres.
Real quick, the Friendly Senior Citizen Advisory Committee will meet here October 10th at 9:00 AM here in the city council chambers. And the girls softball will be out, Fight the Fight Girls Softball Tournament, October 11th and 12th at the Out of Town Park. Thank you.
Councilman Lal.
I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman Zabrowski.
I have nothing.
Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things I want to report. First, I want to say that I want to thank Animal Control for their September Microchip Event. They were able to microchip 11 animals in Fernley. This is a new thing that we're doing every month. And so we have another event planned for a couple of weeks. I don't have the date. But it's on our Facebook page and on the animal control page. So look for that in October. If your animal's not microchipped, it's a low cost alternative. Or you can bring a bag of dog food and the information's on the site. The other thing I want to remind everyone is the Howell O'Wean 5K Walk Run at Out of Town Park on October the 15th at 8:00 AM. This is an event that helps raise money for the Friends of the Fernley Animal Shelter, for our endeavor into building an animal shelter for dogs and cats in the city of Fernley. I encourage everyone to go to the animal control page or the Friends of Fernley Animal Services page and sign up for that. It's $40 and the $40 donation goes directly to that, that event and that fund. I want to report that we had a meeting on the Fernley 25th anniversary this month, last month, actually. I forgot. We're, we're in October now. For July 2026, and we have multiple events planned over the course of Wednesday through Saturday or Sunday. Is, I don't know if it goes all the way to Sunday yet, but kind of that Sunday?
Saturday.
That's what I thought, Wednesday through Saturday. And so I've added an agenda item to cancel our meeting for that week because staff will be extremely busy. We have a full, full effort. That's what I thought, Wednesday through Saturday. And so, uh, I've added an agenda item to, um, cancel our meeting for that week because staff will be extremely busy. Uh, we have a full, full effort by all staff, uh, in different departments to help with this. It's gonna be a big anniversary special and we're super excited about that. And I want to welcome everyone to the, uh, first week of fall and that's all.
All right. Thank you. So I have a few things to, uh, talk about. First of all is I wanna, uh, speak on, um, our Spooktacular and Jessica wrote something that I'm gonna read here. It's October is here, which means Spooktacular is just around the corner. The city of Fernley is inviting local businesses, organizations and clubs to join in on the fun by sponsoring the issue's event and helping us hand out candy to our little trick or treaters. As a thank you, sponsors receive free advertising and the option to host either an indoor table at City Hall or an outdoor, outdoor spot at our trunk or treat. If you'd like to participate, please reach out to jessica murdoch at j murdoch at cityoffernley.org. Flyers with more details are available along the back wall and we look forward to celebrating with you on October thirty first and we'll see you there. And that, this is the, uh, the flyer, I believe with the information is in the back. Also, um, so I, I've been setting up these meeting, uh, meetings with different, um, entities around and I had a really, really productive meeting with the fire chief, uh, this last week. We spoke for an hour and a half. And we, uh, are trying to rekindle this relationship, uh, with the fire department. And so we will be meeting with the fire department chief once a month, uh, with, uh, I will have our Acting City Manager, City Manager, our Public Works Director, our, um, and a meeting with the fire chief and possibly one of his, uh, board members. Um, so I'm really looking forward into moving this forward to see how the fire department can help the city of Fernley and the city of Fernley, um, can help the fire department. I also had a really good meeting with, uh, Lyon County, uh, manager, uh, Andrew Haskins and the same there. Um, we're gonna start setting up a meeting to where, uh, he and I meet once a month, just to go over things on, um, how Lyon County can help the city of Fernley as we move forward with this big growth spurt that we're having. And then also, um, you know, we spoke about, it seemed like Fernley was its own separate entity from Lyon County, but we're not. We're, we are Lyon County. We are in Lyon County. And speaking with Andrew Haskins, uh, we're trying to rekindle this relationship as well. And, and by that, I mean, we need to, uh, I want Lyon County to be involved in our twenty fifth celebration. And so, uh, we'll be reaching out to Lyon County and hoping, hopefully the commissioners, I see one sitting in the back there, um, will agree to help and, and support our twenty fifth, uh, celebration here in Lyon County and the city of Fernley. Um, also, let's see, I'm putting glasses on. Um, just a little update on, uh, the city manager search. So with CPSHR is now in the process. They have put a pamphlet together. It's out on their website. Everybody who has applied for the city manager position through the city of Fernley was redirected to the website for CPSHR to reapply, um, for that, uh, for the city manager position. And as of the beginning of the week, I think, um, it just went out and they already had eight applicants for it. And so it, it, um, it closes, I believe, October twenty ninth. Um, but I, but I also sent an email to every council person here, um, stating where we're at in the process and the timeline. And it looks like, uh, the middle of December, uh, the middle of December, the third, uh, second meeting in December, we will be bringing forward, um, candidates, uh, for a city manager position. I do know that we've had some, I've had a few people that I know from North Lyon County that have, um, are gonna apply for it, which is, which is kind of awesome. Uh, but they have to go through the same process as anybody else. We, we want to make sure we get somebody that's in here that's qualified and, and, um, to, to run the city and, and know how to do the budget, the budget process and, and just transparent and be getting out in the public. And so I'm really looking forward, um, to having that done. All right. If there are no other reports, we will move on to proclamations and I do have one proclamation here. And it is a national four H week. So whereas four H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting six million youth across the country, and whereas four H programs are delivered by a corporative extension system, a community of more than one hundred public land grant colleges and universities across the nation that provides experience to youth, to young people to learn by doing. And whereas the four H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful, independent. And whereas four H connects young people and adults and their communities, preparing them for work and life through experimental and inquiry based learning while providing emergency research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from a strong agriculture roots, four H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas supporting future leaders of science agriculture, community leadership is an important imperative for U.S. Department of Agriculture National Institute of Food and Agriculture four H Programs. And now therefore I nail E. McIntyre, Mayor of the City of Fernley, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty five as National Four H Week through the city of Fernley and encourage all citizens to recognize four H as a significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. And witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Fernley, Nevada to be affixed first of October, two thousand and twenty five. I'm sorry, and Hillary is here to accept this. Now we'll move on to line item five presentations. Presentation, discussion, possible action on the city of Fernley retain Merchant McIntyre Associates lobbying firm. And I believe, are they online or on Zoom or? Ms. Altek, are you presenting for him?
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Oh, there we go.
Uh, Merchant McIntyre Associates proposes to help the city of Fernley secure an unprecedented amount of support on a regular basis. Federal funding will be achieved through competitive grants, Congressional Airmarks and Water Resources Development Act. The ultimate objective is for the, is for every federal dollar they secure to provide budget relief and help Fernley take a leap forward on initiatives to better serve its citizens. Merchant McIntyre will pursue significant funding for the city of Fernley priority projects such as facility upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the water treatment facility for surface water integration, the roundabout, parks and athletic fields. While they cannot lobby federal agencies directly, they will mobilize members of Congress to support and, uh, grant applications. Other types of projects include public safety. They may be able to work with the fire district to pursue funding for the fire station equipment for the new fire station. Economic development. And the RACE grant. Merchant McIntyre will work with the Secretary of Department of Transportation to secure the funding that has been promised to the city of Fernley. Um, since this is a new initiative for Fernley and because they appreciate the city's budget constraints, they propose an initial ninety day engagement. The four deliberables during the ninety days are conduct a resource inventory to identify specific funding objectives and potential grant requests for Fernley. Number two, prepare a comprehensive federal funding strategy for the city featuring a detailed federal grants grid so you can assess funding opportunities and evaluate Merchant McIntyre's strategies to secure that funding. Three, arrange substantive meetings with congressional staff and executive branch program officers who have jurisdiction over the Merchant McIntyre funding targets. Number four, support Fernley in all facets of the federal grant process, including planning, writing, designing, partnership development, budget development, application submissions and administrative requirements. The fifth deliberable is that the city will get to evaluate Merchant McIntyre during this time and its strategic thinking. And at this time, I will allow Merchant McIntyre to take it away.
Thank you, Lydia. I am Mark McIntyre and I'm joined by my colleague, uh, Brandon Bookout. Can you all hear us okay?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Very good. Um, Lydia was reading from the federal funding action plan that we prepared for the city. Do the council members have a copy of that full federal funding action plan?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, very good. So, um, our motto for meetings like this is be clear, be brief and be gone. How does that sound? We know you have other work. So in preparation for this meeting, uh, we spoke twice with Casey. We talked once with Lydia and we also spoke once with Mayor McIntyre. As a result of those discussions, we prepared the federal funding action plan that you all have. And we also read your strategic plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six. And as you all know, your population is projected to increase to forty thousand citizens. And of course, that growth is fantastic news and it's going to put significant stress on all of your infrastructure. So on page four of that strategic plan, you mentioned transportation, water, sewer, stormwater, the farm district road multi-use path and other needs. All of those needs can be funded through federal support. And that's where Merchant McIntyre comes in. We are the leading government relations agency that serves exclusively local governments and other types of nonprofits. We assume that God loves corporate lobbyists. That's not who we are. Our passion is serving folks like you. We exist for one reason. And Lydia mentioned it, to achieve an unprecedented level of federal funding for cities like Fernley who are going to experience tremendous growth in the years ahead. With that, Brandon, uh, why don't we go through our slides? And again, in the spirit of being clear, be brief and be gone. We have three slides, not thirty, and then we will open it up for questions, uh, from the council. Brandon, your, your hand is raised. You have a.
Here we go. Now I'm on there.
All right. There you go.
I think Lydia is controlling the slides. Lydia, can you click to the next slide?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, got it. Okay. There you go.
There you go. So as much as we, yeah. As much as we like the federal funding process to be a magic show, it's not. It's a process. And we at Merchant McIntyre are a team of twenty eight professionals who are expert in the federal funding process. So if the city were to retain us, suddenly you and Lydia and Casey would have a federal grant staff of twenty eight people. I, I just want to give two real life examples of the advantages of having experts working for you in Washington who are experts in this process. So I think we're all aware that at twelve oh one AM, the federal government shut down. Because this is my fortieth federal fiscal year and because my colleagues and I have been through many of these shutdowns, we prepared each of our local governments to pursue certain protocols, meeting with federal program officers, meeting with members of Congress, congressional staff to protect the funding that they have in the pipeline. So that's point one. Point two, obviously with a new administration, the federal grants process changes. So my business partner Brett Merchant met with a federal program officer in February about a very important grant to one of our clients. And she said, we don't know when the grant's going to be announced. But we're planning to maintain that particular grant. In February, based on that meeting, we started working on that grant. The grant announcement did not come out until July. And as Casey knows, as Lydia knows, typically grant announcements have a ninety day or a sixty day or a thirty day turnaround. This grant was announced with a fourteen day turnaround. Guess what? Our grant was written and we submitted it early. So that's the difference. That's the advantage of having boots on the ground in Washington, DC. Lydia, can you go to the next slide, please? So we at Merchant McIntyre Associates exist to deliver a good to great to fantastic return on investment. And it's common for us to deliver an ROI of ten to one, twenty to one, thirty to one, or even greater because the federal funding awards are so large. If you look at page two, the bottom of page two, in the action plan that we prepared for the city, we list some of the relevant ROIs, uh, that we've achieved for similar cities. Um, just to name a few of those, the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, we've secured an ROI of two hundred and fifteen to one. The city of Manassas Park, Virginia, forty four to one. The city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, twenty nine to one. And on page three of that action plan, we list some of the relevant funding awards that we've won for other local governments. Again, just to name a few, thirty million for sewer system upgrades, twenty million for water and wastewater infrastructure improvements and twenty one point three million for a major surface transportation project. So that just gives you all a sense of sort of, uh, what our objective is in a partnership with a local government like Fernley. Lydia, if you could go to the next slide. So, uh, the federal.
So the federal government will spend billions of dollars in FY '27 for local government projects to support surface transportation, water and wastewater infrastructure, public safety, law enforcement, pedestrian safety, trails, parks and recreation, the list goes on. That funding will be spent and distributed through competitive federal grants, congressional earmarks and major authorizing legislation like the Water Resources Development Act. We at Merchant McIntyre take a leave no stone unturned approach and pursue funding from each of those sources to help maximize your return on investment. And the federal funding process has always had a political element. And this administration has made it clear that they're favoring applications from states that they need to win in 2026 and 2028. And this is the time for the city of Fernley to begin a comprehensive federal grants program. So with that, let's go to the next slide and let's do some questions and answers.
Yeah, and Lydia, if you can, if you could just take down the slides, that will enable us to see the members of the city council. And while Lydia is doing that, we're happy to answer whatever questions you may have about who we are and how we work.
Councilman Mendoza.
Yes, thank you guys for your presentation. A quick question. What can you realistically deliver to us within this three month period? Where city council can measure the effectiveness of your organization in helping us with these funds?
Yeah, so the deliverables answer that question, Councilman. And we will take you through a process which we call a resource inventory process, which will lead to a comprehensive federal funding strategy and a very detailed grants grid that has every grant, the award ceiling, the fundable activities and the due date. And you can imagine based on those due dates that a very specific action plan develops essentially immediately. Okay? During that 90 day period, if there is a grant that we know is forecast to be open, that the city is interested in pursuing, we're going to start writing that grant. Likewise, we've already begun planning congressional earmarks for the next cycle. We would begin writing that. So you're absolutely right. In the first 90 days, we're not going to make you rich. Because again, it's not a magic show, it's a process. But during those 90 days, you're going to have a crystal clear, drop dead understanding of what potential funding opportunities there are for the city of Fernley. And you're going to be able to evaluate our strategic thinking and added value. And one of two things is going to happen. You're going to say either, wow, you're the right partner. We see the funding. Let's go get it. Or you can lovingly throw us in Pyramid Lake.
Yeah, you don't want to be in that lake. I, the, the last question I would have is, would you guys be willing to work like an injury accident attorney where you guys get paid based off of grants produced? If we get a $30 million grant, then we give you a percentage of what you guys actually worked for and what we actually received as opposed to paying you guys a certain amount of money and potentially not getting any money from these grants.
Yeah, that would be our dream. There's only one small problem with that. It's illegal. It's illegal for an agency like ours to be compensated with federal dollars. As my wife says, Mark, you don't look good in orange.
Well, that's a good answer.
We, well, we, I mean, we, the, the reason we've always worked on a monthly retainer basis is for that reason. Again, believe me, when if, how great would it be for us to get 10% of a $21.4 million grant one week, a $4 million EDA grant the next week and so forth, but. And you can understand why it that, why that's illegal. There could be a lot of, you know, kickback schemes and that kind of thing.
Great. Well, thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Zaburski.
Just out of curiosity, it seems like a bad investment to go into like a time trial period with a government shutdown happening or no? I'm not sure.
May, may I?
Yep.
Yeah, a, the, the longest government shutdown at the federal level in history is 31 days. Typically, they're two, three, four days. And it's, it's the federal equivalent of freeze tag. It pauses the process, but it doesn't stop the process. So the grants and the congressional earmarks will continue to flow.
Okay, um, my other question was, was, did somebody on our city staff find this firm? Did they contact us? I'm just, I'm just curious how this kind of came about.
Yeah, Brandon, do you remember? I believe that we contacted the city.
We did. We, I believe we sent a letter to Mayor McIntyre because we identified the city as a prime candidate for federal funding based on your federal grant eligibility.
Yeah, so to help answer that, they did email me. I emailed them back and then that's why it's on the agenda right now. Because of all the granting opportunities that I see from the federal grants. And I guess part of my, my thing is I don't believe that this affects our our state lobbyists and, and outfits that are working with us as well because we do have company, um, we do have Western Nevada Development District working with us, trying to get grants for, for our water, uh, or wastewater treatment or, or, um, water, uh, or water treatment plant. So how does, how would that work?
Yeah, so first, we play well with others. And the way I define playing well with others is we're willing to do 99% of the work and give the other partner 100% of the credit. Tell us more about W N D D. Uh, how large a staff do they have?
Well, well, first of all, i- if you will, I'd like to let Councilwoman Zaburski finish her questioning.
Of course, sorry.
I think that we do have staff members that actively look for our federal grants, correct? Is that correct?
We don't have a grants department, but I mean, we are looking for grants, yeah.
Yeah. And I think we also have a council member that has very active connections to these different, different organizations that help us with grants. I mean, if, if you're not familiar with W N D D, that concerns me a little bit. I feel like anybody that's out there looking for grants, you're going to be aware of the other firms that are also out there looking for federal grants or will have run into them at some point. And I'm also really curious, you know, how, 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 how many cities are actually looked at as targets for federal grant opportunities? Was this just a masked cold, you know, cold email that was sent out to a ton of cities and we kind of see who bites? I just, it's, it's a lot of money and I've have tried to do research on the firm. I've never heard of it before and I just, I just want to feel confident about, about the organization, so.
Yeah, so you, you covered a lot of, of ground there. Let me, let me try to respond to what you said. So we spoke with Casey. And Casey told us that you all have a grants office of one person. And what we're proposing is that you make this investment and retain our agency to exponentially grow your federal support. I'm not surprised that you've never heard of us. Because our approach is it's much better to be faithful than famous. If you've ever been to a major congressional event, Merchant McIntyre people were never the people you would have seen at the head table and certainly not at the podium. We were in the kitchen. We're all former congressional staff people and administration staff people. And so as staff, our job used to be to find federal support for folks like Fernley. So I asked a question about W N D D. Uh, we've done our homework with them. We understand that you all, that they helped you all win an EDA grant. Uh, we work with organizations around the country like W N D D. So we're familiar with them. We're certainly not as familiar as you are. The question that I was going to ask was, um, how large a staff do they have in terms of pursuing federal support and what is their federal grants track record?
There's only three W N D D employees and I don't know what the track record is, but they are very active. They're a development district, so they are federally funded and they have a very large region. But they also have a lot of connections with Washington and Nevada Congress, Cincinnati.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a, they have a very large region. And if the city were to retain us, if you would like us to work closely with them, we would do that.
Are you done? Councilman Torres?
So one of my questions has already been asked. Basically, this is was a, a cold, cold call. So I guess what I should ask too is, don't the grants that are posted at the federal level have to be posted at the same time to everybody in the public, whether you're a lobbyist or you're a county or city municipality? Like you guys aren't getting the grants information before anybody else is, are you? When that, that would kind of be a little bit under the table?
Uh, not, not at all. The, the federal grants process is a highly relational process. And winning a federal grant, the writing component is only one small piece. I like to tell people that the, that the best government relations book ever written was written in 500 B C. Sun Tzu, The Art of War. And Sun Tzu wrote, quote, infiltration is always more effective than assault. We view the federal government and the individual program officers who run these grant programs. You, we view them as potential major donors. And so we go see them with clients and we ask them a pretty direct question. What advice do you have? We would like to win your grant. What advice do you have about how to win it? And they tell you. They tell you what their competitive preference priorities are. So that we can start working on those in preparation for when the, the NOFO, the Notice of Funding Opportunity comes out. You're absolutely right. Those come out at the same time for everyone. The phrase that we use is we try to win the grants. Let me say that again. We try to win the grants before they're announced. And we do that by having conversation with the folks who run the programs.
Okay, so, I guess I would, my next question would be if, if we're able to bring already with the assets that we have at hand with a phone call. And we bring the regional manager for the Economic Development Agency for the West Coast to the city of Fernley and the region for a week. That'd be a pretty good contact to be able to, to reach out to and bring them to our, our area, right?
Fantastic.
Okay, so we're already doing that. So I guess another question is if we're, that, that's one of many examples. Um, and you said, what is your Western states experience? Looking at your website, it's a lot of things that are east of the Mississippi.
Yeah, so we have represented a variety of interests, local governments in the West. We've previously succeeded on behalf of Nye County. Uh, we currently represent Renown Health in the Reno area. And the University of Nevada Las Vegas Eye Institute just signed a contract effective today. Uh, we represent a variety of cities in California, in Washington State, as large as the Los Angeles Port Authority and as small as, you know, rural communities that you probably, you know, haven't heard of.
And then have you guys ever, did you guys reach out to our, our local lobbyists to find out uh, how to possibly work with them on securing these grants since they're, they have a home field advantage and have the information and the institutional knowledge beforehand?
Yeah, so you, you're probably familiar with the phrase, all politics is local.
Yes.
The, the folks with the home field advantage is Merchant McIntyre Associates.
Okay, so what is your Nevada experience?
Because we have, because we have relationships with all of the different federal funders. We, we've not researched your local lobbyists. Um, but as I said earlier, uh, one of the hallmarks of a great agency is that we play well with others. So if your local lobbyists or if say W N D D have relationships that we can leverage to help you win federal support, then we will work with them to do that.
And what's your experience in Nevada? I know you said Nye County and UNLV, correct?
Yeah, I mentioned Nye County, uh, Renown Health and Effective Today, uh, UNLV, specifically their Eye Institute. Um, the, the real question is, or the real fact is not our experience in Nevada. The question is, or the fact is, we've won every single type of grant that Fernley would seek. It's an advantage, it's, it's an advantage to Fernley that we currently do not support or work with any local governments in Nevada, which means 100% of our focus would be on behalf of you all. And by the way, we assiduously avoid conflicts of interest. So let's project ahead five years from now and some other local government in Nevada sees that we're winning all this money for Fernley and they call us. The first, the first call we make is to you. You get to decide whether Merchant McIntyre represents any other local governments in the state. Because we, we work with integrity.
So you say you have all these contacts and, and I'm sorry I'm grilling you, but that has to be done and we're talking, you know, the original cost on the agenda was $120,000 and then it went down to $30,000. And I've, I've spoken to the mayor at length about this and with the points of, you know, what we're already getting, what we're doing and what our contacts are currently, um, and we're not being shut down on any grants. Um, you know, honestly, I think, I think $120,000 can be spent better by investing in our own staff and having our own staff be out there looking for grants and writing the grants. And then the contacts through our federal delegation, making those contacts with our people that are in-house uh, in, in, in the city of Fernley to basically push those grants through. So, you know, you, you brought up Sun Tzu and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use your quote, um, your example and, and the one is, is basically, and I know your opponent. So I don't know what it is that you guys are gonna bring that we're not already getting with a phone call. And so I did a little bit of background checking and I reached out to several of our federal delegates, including somebody who sits on the Appropriations Committee. And they've never heard of you. They've never heard of you at the local level out of the Reno office. They've never heard of you at the federal level in DC. So I thought, okay, well, maybe, maybe this was just one of them. So I reached out to a second federal delegate. And this one never heard of you. Not that they haven't worked with you, it's that they've never even heard of your company. Again, they haven't heard out of you, you out of the Reno office and they haven't heard out of you at the DC office with their chiefs of staff I'm having these conversations with. So I don't see how this is a return on investment for the city when we're already getting this and not having to pay 120 grand a year. Basically, you don't have the connections that we needed to have in Nevada.
Yeah. So first of all, we don't view this as grilling. We love what we do and we're happy to answer questions. What I tried to emphasize at the outset is that we are experts in the process. I don't expect anyone to retain Merchant McIntyre Associates because we have quote unquote access. A city like Fernley should retain us for what we know, not who we know. My mentor in this business said, Mark, we are the neck that turns the head. So we're not interested in press. We're not interested in media coverage. What we're interested in is in getting results for folks like you. And in terms of knowing your opponent, we know who our opponent is tonight. Do you want me to tell you who our opponent is?
I don't know if it really matters.
Our opponent is money. We did our homework on you all. And you have a reputation for being frugal. There's no one in this meeting more frugal than I am. I've worked as a migrant. I've worked at a national pipe bending company. I've worked as a house painter. I still think 20 bucks is a lot of money. The reason I'm here is because we know we can deliver for you all. We did not make a cold call. We did our homework on Fernley and we sent a letter to you all because we know we can succeed. And the reason, the reason we offer the 90 day arrangement is so that you all can evaluate us with, with much less money on the table. And it, at the, at the worst, you're gonna have something that you don't currently have. Your staff will have a comprehensive federal funding strategy for Fernley and a detailed grants grid. And if you have existing staff who have, who have produced that, if you have W N D D who's produced that, if your local lobbyist has produced that, then you don't need us. It's a very easy decision.
Okay. Well, then I move to not approve a contract with Merchant McIntyre Associates for their federal funding support. That's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres and seconded by Councilman Zaburski. But after that, I ask one more time for any other comments on this matter? Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see him on there. Are they still on the Zoom? Oh, I see you guys. Thank, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question. So when a city employee completes a grant and submits it, what is different when you do that? Can you explain kind of the process of where our employee sort of sends it and it goes out of their hands and, and you do the same thing? Can you explain how that's different or if it's the same?
You're asking about submitting a grant and how that's different?
I'm just asking the process. So if we have an employee that we hire that's a quote unquote grant writer and they write a grant and they shoot it off, they, they send it and we file that grant, how is that different than what, what you're proposing?
So again, I'm not sure I understand the question. What's different about what we provide is described in our federal funding action plan. Hitting submit on a grant application is a tiny part of the overall grant process.
Right, I understand that. I was hoping maybe elaborate a little bit. You know, my sort of feeling on this, and this is just a general comment, is that, you know, the more sort of fishing poles you have out there, the more fish you're gonna catch. I'm concerned about budgetary costs as well. But if, if we're talking about the existing lobbyists and the existing processes that we're using, aside from the CARES and the ARPA funds, the city hasn't received any major grants. We, we haven't been successful. Whether that changes in the near future, I, I hope it does. I hope that the people that are seeking those grants are successful, but I would caution that if history dictates, you know, the results, then, then we're not doing very well. And we, we've tried this before with another company. We didn't have much success and I think maybe that's why some folks here may be head shy about doing this. But I think that we need to continue to evolve and continue to try and I don't think that having two or three or four lobbyists hurts us. I think that, that maybe having one is more distant, is not quite the advantage. That if we have multiple people that are looking and helping and putting the word out about the city of Fernley. I think the city of Fernley is growing. We all know that. And I think that, you know, we're the epicenter of some of the new growth in, in Northern Nevada. And that's being broadcast across the country. Our name continues to come up. The Mark IV, the Victory Project is just one example of that. So I, I'm in favor of pursuing other avenues for grants and for opportunities. And I think, for example, you know, if we did spend $130,000 in a year and we were able to get a $1 million grant, you know, that's a 10 fold on our money. And I think that's money well spent. I think that only time will, will tell. And I think, like I said before, these existing folks that we've had haven't really produced. We've, we've asked the state for money, we failed. We've asked for other granting, we failed or we were not granted that. And so I'm open to discussion about opportunity. I would be more, more open to more, more results driven. So this is a three month, gives us kind of an analysis of what we have and what direction we can go. But I would be more interested in the six month or a one year trial at a more competitive price to show what you can do to the folks up here. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
I think that if, if this is something that staff is really interested in or the city is really interested in, then I would prefer that we heard from a couple of different lobbying firms and, and not just one before spending $20 or $30,000 or $90,000 or 120,000. I would rather hear from different firms before getting a $30,000 three month proposal for what they're going to do. I would, I, that doesn't seem quite right to me. So if this is something that we're interested in doing, then I think we should table it. And we should also bring, bring in different lobbying firms or, or put that out into the public.
Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a great idea and I'm 100% on board with that. I, I think that we should try to be as transparent as possible with our constituents, the public and staff. And I would agree that that is something that I would like to pursue. I'm voting no on the motion, but I would absolutely like to see this come back with a more competitive bids.
Okay, I, I appreciate everybody's comments on this. I did bring this forward, talking with staff. They thought it was a great idea. I thought it was a great idea, looking over what they did, their accomplishments and, and and the fact that we don't have to give them, the last group, we went with the Porter Group, we had to pay them upfront and we got no results back. And so I, I totally understand the, the, the process of wanting to have more than one firm, federal lobbyists come in and present something to council. I totally get that from this council. But I, I just, I like the layout of this. And this is ultimately this council's decision, but I thought it was a good thing after talking with, with staff. And so that's why I brought it forward. If this isn't what you want, then we will, we will drop back punt and, and do it again and, and bring some other companies forward. So Mr. McIntyre and Merchant, I appreciate your guys' input, all the information that you gave us. And we might be getting back with you in the near future. So thank you very much.
We, we appreciate the time and we are grateful for the opportunity to compete. Thank you all.
And Mayor Morrison, City Attorney.
So now we have.
We still need to vote.
What?
We still need to vote.
I know. If there's no further comment from Councilman Torres, go ahead.
And, and just a reminder, the, the motion on the floor is a motion to deny.
Yes, that is correct. This motion is to deny this. So please vote. So if you vote yes, that means you're voting to deny it. And so motion carries to deny three to two. Thank you. We will now move on to line item 5.2. Presentation by Fernley Community Foundation, Main Street, on the collaboration with the city of Fernley for the transformation of Polaris Plaza into a vibrant, inclusive and sustainable public space for service as a central gathering place and the catalyst of economic, culture and community development in the heart of Fernley. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll switch, kind of switch themes here instead of asking for money. We're gonna talk about asking to give you money. So hopefully that's a welcome approach. We've been working on this Polaris Plaza thing for a long time now. I know I included the original application in your council packet. To, to us, when we first envisioned this, this is kind of like the gateway to the rest of the community center area. It's the thing you're gonna see on Main Street, turning off the Lois Lane. And I think it's really important to kind of get right and, and show. It also beautifies our Main Street, which we all know we badly, badly need. Next slide? Oh, I have this, sorry. All right. So a quick timeline here. February 2019, we were kind of just getting going. Polaris had broken ground. They did not have their facility going. I give these two a ton of credit, Ben Moleman and Ava Brizzy. Ben was their plant manager. Ava was their head of HR. We met out in a trailer on, onsite, watching their panels go up, talking about Fernley Community Foundation. They had a ton of trust in something that really wasn't developed yet. And really it's been a, a long lasting relationship since then. Their distribution center actually opened in August of that year, one week after we held our first ever Fernstock event. So I guess that's a little serendipitous. In October, we were at the same time going through this big community process with TSK Architects that was CDBG funded to produce what we were calling at that point, the community center. And so TSK came forward with their $30 million proposal for what a community center could look like in October of that year. And then in July, we kind of talked about this for about a year, but that Polaris had a national foundation. And the advantage we had is Polaris only gifts grants to organizations in communities where they have plants. And so it was like 10 communities throughout the country. Fernley fit that mold. Ben said, we're the perfect candidate. So we had an introduction call. And again, the city was heavily involved in this, myself, Colleen, and then Dana Anderson with the Polaris Foundation in Minnesota. We put together a proposal. So the Fernley Community Foundation did. It was supported by a letter of support from Daphne Hooper, who was then the city manager. And in September of that year, they granted our foundation $100,000. You would think some contracts and things would go into that. It really didn't. And they said, we have faith in you guys to, to execute this. And it's taken a long time. They've been incredibly patient. I can't say enough positive things about Polaris or their national foundation. But the main thing they wanted was the naming rights up on Main Street. We did purchase that Boulder right away, which was about an $11,000 purchase. Installed it right in the heart of the pandemic. We were gonna do a big groundbreaking ceremony. COVID kind of knocked that out, but we did have a news camera out there and did a little press conference for them. And then in August of the next year, things completely changed with ARPA funds, as you all know, $12 million and then, then some to produce the building that we see now. What we thought was this Polaris Plaza thing was gonna go first and then the rest was gonna get built. Kind of happened the opposite, which is good too, because all these utility runs and everything got done in that area before we, we circled back to this. And then in January 2024, the restroom facility that you see out there was actually originally planned where the playground was installed. And so, and that was part of the CDBG application. So Derek worked with us, did a ton of work to really get everyone's input to move that up to the front, which we fully supported. It makes way more sense up there as a usable feature. It also opened up that other area to build that playground that you see now. So we, we set aside kind of the budget for this project in what we call a restricted fund. So we have unrestricted and restricted. The $100,000 donation we made towards the CRRC project was part of our unrestricted funds. So the restricted part of this budget came directly from that Polaris donation, which was 100,000 minus some of the fees from the transaction. And then brick purchases and other donations that were kind of done in that 2019 period or before, when this Polaris Plaza was our main project. And we raised 32,871 from that. Our expenses in this restricted fund so far, like I said, about $11,000 for that Boulder. We did order an initial set of bricks for $254, just to kind of show them off and push, push that project. And we also, again, back before ARPA dollars, we worked with our Rotary Club to do a professional landscape design for both Main Street Park and Polaris Plaza. We split that cost 50/50. So each of us pitched in $4,000. As you know, the Rotary Club kind of went a different way with their visions. We do still have that in the archives, but that didn't end up quite panning out just because all this other work started going. All right, this is gonna be a little bit tough, but so as, and I want to give Lydia and Jessica a ton of credit on staff. They reached out to us. We, I think we've met out there three different times. Didn't quite know what we were getting into. But as we got this going, it ends up that Wood Rogers actually put together a plan up there when that restroom facility was installed. I, I wasn't even aware of that, but it, it ended up being a really good thing. The plan they put together was very close to what we envisioned anyway. And it kind of showed us where utilities were, which is a, a big challenge in this project. So I kind of tried to point all these out. There's an electric line that kind of goes diagonal across the property. There is a sewer line that goes diagonal across the property. There is also kind of a water and communication line together that goes right along, kind of just outside of the fence line that we're proposing there. The city's gone out and marked all that stuff. So we have a really good idea of where all that's at. And really the plans kind of had to work around that. We don't want to put a concrete pad on top of utility runs. We don't want to build anything on top of them. We don't want to put our bricks on top of them either. So what we've kind of proposed here, we're, and again, talking with Lydia and kind of what are ideas. We wanted to extend the cement pad out from the concession stand that's already there a little bit. And we're gonna be limited on that due to that diagonal electric line that runs across the property. But we're gonna try to extend that out about five to 10 feet. We have 2,100 feet of artificial turf planned, which we hope to kind of match that CRRC lawn area. And then we're gonna work on these bricks that we've sold and kind of put them up right along Main Street, right inside the fence in a diagonal pattern to. in a diagonal pattern to hopefully avoid both, both utility lines. Randy and Dalton and their crew did a fantastic job moving that Polaris Plaza sign over to the corner. So that's going to be outside of the fenced area. We're going to run that fence directly from kind of the side of the Polaris Plaza sign back to the sidewalk that was installed with the CRRC building. So our goal kind of with this is to try to create a community-first event space with potential uses for, uses for public, private and philanthropic causes. I keep emphasizing collaboration. So again, City of Fernley has been, you'll be the owner of this. So obviously a partner. Fernley Community Foundation is going to be the main funder. Shannon has been immensely helpful on the Main Street Fernley side. This kind of fits into some of their goals too. And she'll, she'll talk about, a little bit about that in a second. Obviously with Polaris, Lowe's has stepped up as a partner. I'll talk about that. And then all the donors and brick purchases. And then we kind of already have a, a set of contracts and contractors and vendors picked out. One of the things in the CRRC building that I guess people talk to me about it, that some of the local vendors didn't think they had a fair shot at participating in that project at times. So we're making an emphasis to include local vendors. We have a fencing quote for All Out Fencing, who's been a donor to us anyway. So I think they're a fantastic choice. Moss and Sons Landscaping is going to do a lot of this preliminary project. Like I said, we ordered a set of bricks from a nat, big national corporate type deal where we have to kind of order like a pallet of bricks at a time. Makes it very difficult. So we actually found these guys in Sparks. I was just over at their shop today. Memories etched in stone, little private company. They produced an initial brick for us to show off tonight. So we're really, really happy with that. We're going to aim at doing those bricks through them. Then we don't have to do these big pallets. We can kind of do them one at a time or as they come in. Western Nevada Supply is where these bricks come from. They're super high quality, super compact. They've done a bunch of different projects with, with these bricks in particular. So we're, we're very confident in that. And then our resident carpet king really wants an opportunity to do the synthetic lawn. Kind of signed up today as, as a partner and wants to help us out. So we're excited about working with Mr. Brey as well. So what we're calling this first, kind of what we're asking for permission to proceed with tonight. Phase one. So like I said, we have a fencing quote, 200 feet of 44 inch smooth vertical picket, black iron fence to be done by All Out Fencing. This was kind of what was specified within the plans that Wood Rogers put together. 44 inches seems like a good height. I think it meets all development codes and everything. We're going to try to extend that concrete slab. Like I said, 380 square feet for about $5,000. We're going to work on that artificial turf. So Kelly potentially providing that. Moss and Sons installing it, $32,000 budget for that. These custom engraved bricks, we've gotten an estimate of $40 per brick. It might be a little bit more than that. And we've, we have about 150 bricks allocated right now, which probably include a lot of the members of council right now. So we've, we've allocated $6,000 in installation. Scotty and his team are going to do that for 3,000. And then the rest of the landscaping and irrigation for $7,000 for a total of $62,000. And that would leave us with about $55,000 for future work, phase two, which we're not here to approve tonight. We're going to have to come back and figure that part out. So Lowe's has kind of stepped up, chosen us as their community impact project for the year. The way that's going to work is they're going to donate up to $2,500 worth of materials from their store. They're going to send 10 employees out to work for four hours with us on that plaza. We're targeting Tuesday, October 21st to get all that done. And we're mainly going to focus on the landscaping aspects that day. So we're asking for shrubs, planting and landscaping materials. And then there's like post-concrete and polymeric sand for the bricks that are going to help our other contractors kind of decrease the lot, the, their costs, carrying out those parts of the project. I've been working on kind of some 3D visuals of what this could look like. The city did a great job putting some art installations around that Polaris Plaza sign and kind of right inside where that fence is going to run. And I did throw those planter boxes in there that are already out there. So I think those will fit really nicely. Eventually in phase two, what we'd like to do is do a cement pad with kind of like a, a home, an actual structure with a gazebo. I've kind of just put one example up right now. We'd like to try, try to run power, water, sewer to that. But again, that's a future project. So we're not proposing that tonight. We'll have to come back with all the building permits and everything to be able to do that. It is positioned with easy access to utilities. So we think we really like that possibility. But for tonight, it's going to kind of be everything else but that building. So our questions tonight, and this might go to Mr. Morrison, how do we kind of best formalize this partnership? Is it a resolution, MOU or some sort of lease? We've talked to Lydia about using the city's Civic Rec software to kind of schedule events and reserve space out there eventually. The, kind of the financial pitch to you all, we'd use the Fernley Special Events application. And so you could kind of decide on the amount, the dollar amount that people would have to come in. Fernley Community Foundation would be paying to, to host events there. So that would be a revenue generator from the city as well as, you know, business liquor licenses, things like that. We would hope that we could generate some revenue there by doing things like collecting vendor fees. We have like a food truck Friday type of event maybe in the works for next summer. We could also, would ask for permission to be able to rent out that particular structure that we would, we would be paying for to kind of help us generate some more revenue up there. It really provides great fundraising and event hosting capabilities for all community nonprofits. It's not just the Fernley Community Foundation. It's the Boosters Club, it's the sports teams, it's the softball league. Whoever wants to use it can come in, they'll have to pay the city a fee. But it really right there along Main Street, like you can't get better marketing or visibility than that. And then again, we'll, we'll work, work on responsibilities for utilities and how those are going to be billed once, once we hit this phase two. But tonight we're really just asking for permission for phase one. I did want to invite Shannon up with Main Street Fernley to just talk about her organization, her perspective on kind of how this fits into their vision.
Good evening, Councilmen and Councilwomen and staff and the mayor. Thank you for having me. I'm Shannon Sarasola. I'm the Vice President of Fernley Main Street and also on the Board of Directors. We have been working a lot with Lydia and also with Cody and trying to create a vision of what we'd like our Main Street to be. And so it would be tie into what we're currently trying to propose over at the plaza here. We want it to be a cohesive look. When we moved down Main Street, we placed our first bench this week. We're very excited. Over at the Silver Spur, we got a concrete pad placed. And so the garbage can and our first bench is out. We have nine more of those to follow along and we're very excited about that. We're working within dot diligently to get some of them in within there right away and, and put some in some private locations. So they're much easier to use. I think it's important at the City of Fernley, be proud of what our Main Street is and that we have a location where we can host any of our events. We hosted the Historical Poker Walk this weekend. We utilized the Fernley Main Street Park as our location to set up our main booth. We would really be excited to have someplace over by the plaza where we have a stage or some, a gazebo that covers something that we could work in the shade. It was very hot. We had to provide our pop-up tents. We'd like our Main Street to be professional when people come through and want to, and our community wants to experience these things. We appreciate all of your help in making this happen and, and finding a way to get a symbiotic look between our Main Street Park that we hope to help with the city grow and, and make better and tie it into this location with the plaza. And finding corporate sponsorship that helps us get some solar lights down the street. Additional pathways that connect our walkability to our businesses and, and allows our community just to have a place that we can come and we can congregate that is not clear out the out of town park. And some of it has to be in the in-town park. We want someplace that is in the middle of our city and in our downtown area. And we appreciate the community foundation for working with us as another nonprofit organization as well as our local chamber office to kind of create one vision and use the same energy and the synergy between all of these groups to bring it all together and get something finished and complete that we can all be proud of and be able to utilize as a community. And not just a high school where we have to try to get in and borrow the gym when it's there and they're, somebody's not in it. So we appreciate everything that you guys have done and all of our help from our community that's been there. And we look forward to working with the foundation to kind of continue this process and keep these phases going and making a bigger and better project for us. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. Otherwise I'm going to turn it back over to Cody. He's been a great leader and we really appreciate working with him. Thank you.
Aaron Morrison, City Attorney. I know Cody just talked about kind of what next steps would be. Today is just a presentation, so council shouldn't take any action on today's date in regards to this. But I think probably the first step would be to, to schedule a pre-planning meeting with planning for the community foundation. And I think what we'd probably want to do is either an MOU or do a land lease. And we could kind of discuss the pros and cons. The pre-planning meeting would also have an opportunity for all of staff as well as the, all of staff to kind of have their input as to kind of what would be needed to make this work. And I think that'd be a good place to start.
Okay, very good. I do want to get any council like suggestions, perspective, anything like that tonight too, so we can incorporate that.
Well, real quick, Cody, I want to thank you and you as well, Shannon, for all the work you've done. And city staff, because that section of the city on Main Street is looking beautiful. I really like how it's coming together. And in the future, it's going to be really great. Let's go ahead and start with Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much both for the presentation. Our downtown is sort of like our core of the city. And we've been talking about this for a long time. And to see things finally happening is, it's super exciting for everyone. A lot of people are asking questions, what's going on? The AR Park, the CRRC. And a lot of folks, I'm surprised when we post these pictures that a lot of folks don't even know that we've built the CRRC. It's, it's kind of shocking. But I'm on board. I was, I was, while our council was talking, I was thinking of an MOU or a lease or whatever we can work out. But I'm excited to see what, what you guys come up with. Thank you for all your hard work. It really is impacting the city and making a huge difference. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Zabrowski and then Councilman Mendoza.
I guess I, we'd kind of be on a time crunch for like the pre-planning meeting if Lowe's is trying to have their workday and come do work by the 21st. Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the scope of Lowe's work is just basically planting shrubs. We're not like really installing anything super permanent. So I think the other time crunch is winter coming up. I, I do think we want to get those bushes, especially in the ground and try to get some of this work going as soon as we can before winter hits.
I think that's really exciting. Yeah. And sooner the better because now that the CRRC is already done, we kind of want to like beautify that front portion of it for sure. And it seems like you guys have done a ton of work to, to plan for that. So I'm really excited. So hopefully we can get the pre-planned meeting done sooner than later. And then also I don't, I'm trying to picture how much space the Polaris Plaza like actually has, because I pictured it being really big, but I don't know if you're only showing us pieces.
It's not very big.
Super small.
It is, but you know, the other thing is I think there's a lot of momentum to try to get this gym built. And it would kind of be built right up to this. So if there's an event going on inside, all of a sudden you kind of have this outdoor cocktail hour type area to come out to. And it works really well with that. And it works really well with the, the depot building if you're hosting events in there as well. So I, it is small, but I think, I, I think there's a lot of utility. We also have room to expand it over in front of the depot as time goes. That's not part of tonight's proposal.
Very cool. Okay, that was my only, the only other question I had, I think is like a later phase. When the bricks look really good, those look, that looks really nice. I think that that would be really, people would be very proud to drive past that on Main Street. So I, I love that idea. And then phases down the line. I remember talking about, you know, the shipping containers or doing something similar to like the Eddie House, which would be so cool because it's our train depot. So it really makes sense to have stuff like that. We don't really have space for, for that.
Yeah, not, not, I think that was as we were pushing this idea of it being a little bit bigger with Derek and that, that ship's kind of sailed. So if we could do something like that, I think it would be kind of on the west side in front of the depot. If we kind of created that whole area into this plaza as the front yard of the depot. But again, that's probably years down the road. Right now, we'd be pretty happy with this, this smaller concept with, with some shade and a little bit of indoor space.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's really exciting.
Councilman Mendoza.
Thank you guys for being here. Just a quick question. Would this be better accomplished during a workshop so that we could iron out all the details as a council? Prior to this becoming an actionable item on an agenda, since we are the ones that have to approve it?
Well, I can just tell you from my perspective, ideally what we do is get this pre-planning thing done. And then if, if it's an MOU, I kind of think maybe it's an MOU. We could just have it as a consent agenda item at your, in either next meeting or that first meeting of November. As long as we kind of have permission to move forward with the Polaris part of it. Not the Polaris, sorry, the Lowe's part of it.
Yeah, I think this is more a question for all of us to figure out how we want to approach this. So, but thank you.
Councilman Torres.
Whatever I could do to help. Let me know, please. Thank you guys. And thank you guys for everything getting this far and staff as well.
Councilman Hannan.
I forgot to say, small space, big impact. And that's what this is. And, and that's what makes it so great. And I'm excited to see what you guys come up with. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
This time we'll take a 10 minute recess. All right, like to call this meeting back to order. We are, we um, removed. Uh, line item 5.3. So now we, we will go to line item six ordinance is 6.1. Um. Possible action introduction, well, introduction and first reading of First Amendment. To the Red Hawk Ranch Development Agreement Bill Number 368 DA 20002 dash AMD 1. Submitted by Wood Rogers in behalf of Red Hawk Ranch LLC Series B and DB dash BB Investments. One LLC to request the following changes. One, incorporate all property owners. And parcels into the agreement. Two, extend the expiration date of all applicant tentative map subdivision maps. Three, establish a fame framework for the future assessment. Special Assessment District. Four, allow an onsite density transfer. And five, relocate the community park. The Red Hawk Ranch Division Agreement. Development Agreement as amended encompasses four parcels totaling approximately 161.09 acres. In the area APNS 021 dash 041 dash 07. 08, 09, and 10. Ms. Rambo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Michelle Rambo, Planning Director for the record. This is a first reading for the ordinance needed to amend the development agreement. And there are several, as the mayor read, there are several requests. And we will come back next uh, meeting with a very detailed uh, presentation and a public hearing.
Thank you.
Aaron Morrison, City Attorney, no motion is needed or anything like that, but there can be discussion if council wants to, or they can reserve that discussion for the second reading.
So does council have any, any question, Councilwoman Zabrowski?
Um, do we send um, notices out for all of the surrounding community?
We will. Those notices will go out for the public hearing, I believe, uh, and later this week or early next week.
Okay.
The first reading, the first reading is not a public hearing, so.
Okay, but they'll go out.
They'll go out. Yeah.
Okay. And then, is there any way, how, how? How many? Or maybe you can, if you can, we, please just email me and let me know how many notices that we sent out and what. The premise of the notices that were sent out.
Yeah.
Please. Thank you.
And I can send you a copy just so you can see it yourself.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to line item. 6.2 Discussion Possible Action, Introductions, First Reading of a Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA. 25001 requested by Wood Rogers Incorporated on behalf of. Genesee Clover Ranch LLC rezoning, six parcels containing approximately 24.72 acres. From RR half rural residential half acre minimum and RR5. Rural resident five acre minimum to SF6, single family 6,000 square foot minimum. Generally located between Farm District Road to the south. Langdon Street to the north, Winnie Lane to the west, and Nevada Pacific Boulevard to the east. APN 021 dash 331 dash 15. Dash 19, dash 20, dash 22, dash 29, and dash 38. Ms. Rambo.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michelle Rambo, uh, Planning Director for the record. Again, this is a first reading. This one is for a zoning map amendment uh, to change. Some rural residential and two single family uh, 6,000 SF6, 6,000 square foot lots. And again, we will have a more detailed presentation and a public hearing at your next meeting.
Any questions from council? All right, saying none, thank you. We will now move on to line item 6.3, introductory and first reading of Bill Number 367 associated with the zoning map amendment request. ZMA 25002 from the city of Fernley. Rezoning one parcel containing approximately 23.19 acres. Generally located at 2305 Farm District Road from SF20, single family 20,000 square foot lots. To OSP, open space and parks to bring the site into conformance with the comprehensive master plan. Use designation of open space and parks OSP APN. 021 dash 303 dash 16. Ms. Rambo.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michelle Rambo, Planning Director again for the record. Uh, this is our third first reading. Um, this one is dealing with the property that has been designated for the mayor's fishing pond park. And this is just a cleanup um, to bring it into conformance with the master plan designation. And again, next meeting we'll have more detail and a public hearing on that as well.
All right. Thank you. There is no question by council. I appreciate that. Okay. We will now move on to line item 7, public hearing. 7.1 Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Bill Number 369. Regulating alcohol delivery from licensed. Covered food establishments within the city limits.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kim Swanson for the record. This is the second reading and adoption of Bill 369, which is derived from AB 375. That was enacted during the 83rd legislative session. This bill is commonly referred to as the cocktails to go bill as it allows the off-premise delivery of alcoholic beverages. This bill allows certain food establishments that are already licensed for an on-premise alcohol sales. To sell and deliver sealed alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption. A 50 cent surcharge per drink funds the DUI prevention through the expanded ignition interlock and DUI reduction program. No new licenses needed. The establishments that are currently licensed can offer this service. Delivering alcohol requires extra training, so the delivery drivers must complete mandatory training prior to delivering the cocktails. Establishments must use tamper evident. Packaging, and this ensures that the drinks have not been sampled before being delivered to the customer. And it also protects the drivers from open container violations. Staff recommends adoption of this bill as it creates a new revenue stream for the 22 qualified food covered establishments in our city. And I'm available for questions.
Councilwoman Zabrowski.
I think maybe I missed it, but is that like grocery stores too? Or just restaurants?
The, the grocery stores can deliver already, but so this is just covered food establishments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Lal and then Councilman Mendoza.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, um, you have comment, Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, Ken, thank you for presenting this. I just have a couple of questions real quick. How is it tracked that an Uber driver is? Is that going to fall on us or is that fall on the establishment? As far as if they're available and did the proper training to deliver?
So I've asked for cooperation from um. The Nevada Restaurant Association to help us get that point across that the Uber drivers must be trained. And get a city friendly, city of friendly business license. So, because there's lots of Uber drivers out there and they need a license, but they're not licensed. So we try, but you know, I mean, we do as, as good as we can.
So should we start Ubering food here for a council meeting and then asking for their license when they show up? I mean.
Yeah, well, you know.
Yeah. Um, and the next thing is, is. Who regulates the tamper proof or? You know, the quality of the, the drinks and all that stuff. Is that the health department that's going to be doing that?
No, that will be the restaurant.
The restaurant themselves.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, are you done? Okay, good. Um, this is a public hearing, so. Uh, if there's no further discussion with council, I'll ask, is there any public input at this time? Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. Um, I guess I'll ask for additional comments from council. And saying none, Councilman Lal, go ahead.
I moved to adopt Bill Numbers 368 and ordinance regulating alcohol delivery. From licensed covered food establishments within city limits.
Second.
We have, uh, before we take a vote, uh, Councilman Mendoza.
Yeah, it sounds like uh, Councilman Lal voted 368 and the bill shows 369 on my documents. So can we get the correct bill?
369 is the correct bill.
What's that?
369 is the correct bill number.
369, and I do believe he said 368. So if you could amend your motion.
Yeah, I'd like to amend it to 368.
No, 369.
369.
369, yes.
I second with the correction.
I second with the correction.
Okay, we have amendment to a motion to change it from bill three, sixty eight to three, sixty nine. If there's no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll now move on to line item. Eight, staff reports eight point one, discussion possible action to direct staff consider whether the city should hire a professional consultant to conduct an efficiency study. And provide direction to staff as appropriate. Acting City Managers Lydia Altec presenting.
Good evening, Council Mayor Lydia Altec, active city manager. This, uh, item was requested on September, September third by Councilman Mendoza. And staff is looking for direction on this item. For informational purposes, I put together a. Quick slideshow for, um, the PowerPoint. Because the reason I did this is because there have been three efficiency studies done between twenty twenty and twenty twenty three. And because we have a new council member and a lot of new staff, um, a couple new. Department heads, a lot of new planning staff, et cetera, I thought this might be useful. So people could know what's out there and they're all very different, well, they're different studies from each other, but this is what we've done. Okay, the number one study. Development Review Operational Assessment and done in twenty twenty one by Management Partners. And the result of this was an implementation action plan. After that, number two, we did a federal municipal court in Fernley City Attorney Evaluation in twenty twenty two. The National Center for State Courts did this study. The result was a technical assistance efficiency study. And the third one was, uh, to develop an action plan to ensure growth occurs in a manner sensitive to the character of the community. Um, and that was done in twenty twenty. I just realized I left my notes up there, but we'll just get through this. And the result of that was a twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six strategic plan.
Ms. Altec, do you want your notes, we can, I can bring them down to you.
I hope.
I can hand them down to you.
I, I hope I brought them. I, I might have left them in my office, so we're just going to go with this. The number one, the implementation action plan. The, so this is the list of number one priorities. And there's quite a list here, but, uh, hold development services account accountable for improving customer service. Conduct regular training for staff about the various components of development review process. Provide detail access, uh, process information on the city's website in a matter that is consolidated, readily accessible, understandable and current. Develop an interdepartmental working group charged with oversight of the development review and permitting business systems. Create an administrative permit coordinator position to manage the use of the smart goods system and act as a liaison for training. And in Ombudsman for permitting. Fund annual training of staff on the land management business systems and workflow management process practices. Ensure all plan review staff enter comments directly into Smart Gov. Delegate applications for review within twenty four hours of receipt by the department. Train cross train draft on internal development review processes. Educate customers about the development review process until existing and new handouts and the city website. High, hire or promote a Smart Gov Administrator Permit Coordinator. Re-implement Smart Gov and provide robust Smart Gov training. Develop a process to ensure permits are closed out. Obtain commitment from leadership to ensure all applicants and employees are treated equitably. And this is an ongoing process for us. And number two, the Fernley Municipal Court and Fernley City is, uh. Attorney Technical Assistance Efficiency Study. The recommended, recommendation areas were governance and roles, communication and information exchange. Court operations and processes, city attorney operations and processes. And then link all court functions and actions to achieve efficiencies. To the stated goals and objectives within the strategic plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six. And then the third.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Zabrowski.
Um, for a while after, um, if you go back to the, the very first efficiency study that we did. All of those priorities, we were kind of getting, um, updates on as far as where we were at in, in our priority list. And then it kind of stopped. Just as far as, as the updates that we were, I remember when we did this efficiency study and we were kind of, we kind of had a checklist. Okay, this is what we're doing to address this priority, this what we're doing for this priority. And we were kind of going through and it was somewhat of a checklist and, and then it kind of stopped and then it kind of, it kind of fell off. So I'm just curious if, if you're, if you know about this or.
Yeah, I did an update on this about a year and a half ago and. We're doing, there's a couple of things on there that we haven't done. But ninety percent of those things are, we're actually still doing and the Smart Gov is, is one of them. So we went, uh, as you probably know. To Civic Plus and that didn't work out, they were not, um, what they promoted themselves as. So we are back with Smart Gov and very happy with what they're doing and their, and the abilities of that software. So right now we're in the training program, um, actually civic, um, sorry, city clerk and licensing. And dog licensing is training right now and setting up their. Ability to use Smart Gov for business licenses. Engineering's already been using it to some degree, but they are also right now improving their. Applications and integrating those applications into the software. Planning Department doing the same thing right now and. Building Department has already been doing it, but there's even improvements that they're getting for Smart Gov. And it'll be much easier for them to use as a front counter staff, but also for the applicants who just want to do it online to their computers. So that's probably the most exciting thing about this whole thing. And of course, we did, uh, hire a. Um, development coordinator. And.
Yeah, if there's, if there's any way that, um, you know, when we revisit this, um, efficiency study or we plan on, on, um, putting that into action is having a new efficiency study done. If there's a way that we can get, um, you know, kind of a checklist of these priorities and where we're at with the priorities, that would be super helpful for me. Thank you.
I think just give an update on where we're at on every one of these things from the West. Councilman Lau. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. We talked about that. And. The strategic plan, this, um, this plan not only brought us the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six strategic plan, but it also. Gave. Part of this, uh, study was to create a community vision statement, a mission statement and values. So that all happened with this plan. The, uh, vision statement of what the Fernley community found, uh, the Fernley, Fernley community will be as its population grows. And roles in the region changes. Mission statement. Identifying the roles the city government will play, serving the community and managing the transition. And values that will drive the community transition and reflect what Fernley stands for. An action plan. I think you're all familiar with the action plan, but what this became was a scoreboard. And it is used, we update it a couple of times a year. There's every single strategic action, action plan has action items in order to achieve that. That strategic plan. So here is the vision statement. By twenty forty, Fernley is a community that is vibrant, safe, friendly. And family oriented with a high quality of life and engaged residents. Has a strong local economy and abundant amenities for residents. Has a financially stable city government.
Sorry, that's me again.
Yeah.
That's me again. I.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm happy with our strategic plan, I'm just, it's a plan though, so I'm confused, it's not. The efficiency study, it, I mean, we have so many new departments and, and so many new people and stuff, the efficiency part. I think is what this agenda item is about, right?
You're correct.
Strategic plan, I think is, I mean, I think that's awesome and. I love our mission statement and all of our action plans and everything, but I don't know if we can say our strategic plan counts as, uh, an efficiency study on the city or. You know what I mean?
That's a good point and you're right, it, it doesn't. These are just plans that we have that are similar in, in scope to an efficiency study that I thought I would bring to light. So that you know about them and the people that are new to the city would know about them.
And I'm not trying to mess up your presentation, I just want to make sure that I'm super clear because. I picture an efficiency study as something entirely different than a strategic plan, that's kind of our, our city's crystal ball for where we want to see things and not necessarily. How it's accomplishing things right this second.
Correct, and I think. The way I see that it is connected is because to be efficient, you have to have some initiative, some plan in which to base your initiatives. And that's what we've done, we really do fall back on this strategic plan on, in everything that we do. We ask ourselves, well, is it in the strategic plan? So I think that does make us more efficient in that way.
That, that makes sense to me, that statement makes sense to me, so thank you.
Mm hmm. The city of Fernley mission values. Values that, um, state what we stand for as an organization and how we approach our relationships with the community. The elected officials and staff of the city of Fernley commit to serving the community with the following values. Integrity, we act with the highest ethical and professional standards. Accountability, we take ownership and responsibility for our actions. Transparency, we actively communicate our plans, decisions and actions to the community. And respect, we treat all with dignity and fairness. The, let's see here, these are, um, twenty twenty one strategic plan list of goals. It's a lot about growth, manage sustainable growth and maintain public infrastructure. Develop a defined city center with a mix of businesses, restaurants and entertainment. Encourage a variety of housing types, density and costs. That accommodate the needs, desires and financial abilities of the current and future households. Increase opportunities for civic engagement and community building. Maintain strong partnerships with public agencies and community organizations. Ensure municipal services meet the needs and expected, expectations of the community. And develop and maintain revenue sources to support community improvements and services. And each of these goals, as I mentioned, has a list of action, has four or five listed, uh, action items in order to. Maintain, get to these goals. And as I said, scoreboard, which is maintained and that. Is very useful, are there any questions?
Questions?
Sorry, if there's any questions on that, great, but. Basically, this is going to be discussion amongst you all on what you would like to see within an efficiency study. Uh, to sort of help guide staff on. What it is you're looking for in that efficiency study, because it's a very broad topic.
Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Ms. Altec. I, I think it's important that, um. Just to point out, the majority, at least fifty percent of the staff we have now. Were not here when we did the last efficiency study. Like there's department after department after department that is all new. So that's why I think it's important to do a, a new efficiency study, I mean, it's kind of like a five year audit, right? If it was finance. So I, I like a lot of the stuff that. We did the last time that you reported on, um, I just think it's time to, you know, kind of take an inward look again. And see where we're strong, where we're weak, uh, what we're doing right, what we can improve on, but thank you.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that, um, Councilman Torres, is that as we've added so much staff to. To city when I first got here, I think we had sixty some people, we're over a hundred now. So, um, I, I understand what you're talking about as far as. I, I think an efficiency study would tell us where we need to add people, where, where we might be heavy on people. So I, I totally agree with that statement on as far as having so many new staff, so.
And, and it'll also, um, the, the big part is, is, is not just the new staff. But it's why is our turnover outrageous? And we have to find a reason why our turnover is outrageous. We were told that the, the. Huge raises a couple of years ago was a lifesaver and we continue to turn, I mean, our entire engineering department is new. And they're making good money to begin with, so we're, we're doing something. That we're doing something that we need to do better. Because the turnover of existing staff is, I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Councilman Mendoza.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you for your presentation and getting this to us this evening. I put this on the agenda, uh, for a few reasons and those reasons were based off of observations I've had since being on the council. And, you know, one, one thing that is, that I've heard a lot. From multiple staff is everything in government takes time and it's slow. I could agree with that to an extent. But I've also, uh, worked with government workers and sometimes it's because it's a choice of the individual. Um, so I think there's areas that we could improve in. To be more efficient and I want to identify those through this study. You know, we had a study done for IT, um, it was doom and gloom for IT department. And six months later, we still don't have RFPs in front of us to get that fixed. For me, I'm looking from the outside in, that's way too long for us to fix an issue once it's identified. Another issue that I found, um, and I haven't brought it up to anybody, but you know, we requested equipment, um, to be used on fires. And was told we're going to have an extended delay because equipment is infalling. Why is city of friendly equipment infalling? So those are things that I've experienced personally that I want to identify. Um, and kind of figure out what are we actually doing with our resources? And, uh, be good stewards of what the community has given us. I think it's a perfect time for it considering we will have a new city manager, uh, here in the near future. And we will have something to give him to work on and something for him to produce. Um, and some goals, uh, with what we get from this study. So I'm ready to make a motion. If there is no further discussion.
Do we have any further discussion? Saying none, go ahead.
I, I have some questions.
Oh, yeah.
So they, basically you want to look at whether or not we have sufficient staff to complete the work. And. What else?
I, I'll, I'll clarify that in my motion and then I'll follow up with specifics. But it's, do we have enough staff or do we have too many staff? Do we got people standing around doing nothing, uh, those are things that I, I question. I often visit facilities within the city and see a ton of people standing around, why? I don't know what the job is being done that day or what's going on, but I do see a lot of standing around. Um, and as an employer, as a supervisor for a government entity. Those things catch my attention immediately. So those are things that I want to identify within the city and hold our department heads accountable for fixing. Or changing the department heads if they're the issue, so. That's exactly what we're looking into and I'll, I'll make my motion, um, and then I'll follow up with some details.
Okay, and I, and I imagine this is going to be an iterative product process, right, where we're going to. Where we're going to try to develop an RFP and that will be something that we can kind of go back and forth on.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Very good. Okay, are you do?
And Aaron Morton, City Attorney.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could add just a couple of things. In March, on March 20th of this year, I sent the two efficiency studies that the City Attorney's Office was involved in. There was one that was the court one and the one that was generic. When I, and so those were sent to council on, on March 20th of this year for you guys to review. One of the things that was on ours, uh, that if you do decide to move forward, I would like to see a specific efficiency study done by somebody who, by somebody specifically for city attorneys or for attorney's offices. And so we can get kind of that specialized assistance that we need. The last efficiency study was in March 2022 and it was very useful, and I think we've actually accomplished all our goals on it. But I would like some additional specialized help if we decide to move forward there.
Yeah, I think we could probably process that through some of the RFPs if, if the organizations that are giving us bids for this study don't specialize in certain areas, or I think those are things that we need to look at. What are their strengths? What are they, what is their history and things like that? So if that becomes an issue with some of the presenters that we find, I'm more than willing to have a separate one as well.
Okay. Councilman Hanon.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Altek, for your presentation. Would it be appropriate to wait until we have a city manager in place to do an efficiency study? I, I sort of feel that, I, I feel as a city, we're sort of at a disadvantage because we don't have a city manager and we're asking other people to sort of step up and take that role. We don't have somebody here that's, um, that's, that's a fixture besides the mayor to run the city. And so I feel that maybe this is a little unfair to do an efficiency study until we have somebody in that role. Does that make sense or?
That's a good point. That's probably going to be right about the perfect timing by the time we develop a scope, honestly.
Yeah, I would like to see the study done, you know, when we have all of our staffing here and, and all those positions that are, that are detrimental to the city to operate efficiently. And one of those is the city manager. And we've sort of been working with, uh, I sort of, I feel like we're, um, with crutches and, and a cast on one leg. And we're in a, we're in a sprint here. We're on the, the Halloween 5K. And it's, it's not fair, I don't think, to judge what we're doing now because we're, we're really, I mean, technically, we're trying to be as efficient as possible, but we're missing a leader. We're missing somebody, I think. I mean, you're, I know you're filling the, the space, but you're doing multiple jobs and everyone is sort of trying to help out. And it's, I mean no offense to anybody, but, you know, if, if you were the city manager, we would need a deputy, and then I think it would be a, a proper efficiency study. So whichever way we go, with one missing person, which is, you know, sort of the top of the, the rung, if you will, for lack of a better term, I, I don't think we can be efficient. I think that, um, that we need that, um, person. So I, I'm okay with the efficiency study. I don't have a problem with it. I sort of, uh, I was going to ask, you know, what was the reason behind it? And I think it's sort of been mentioned here, what some of the ideas behind why we think we need one, why certain people think that we need an efficiency study. But I think that, um, until we have that position filled for the third time, we're inefficient. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaburski.
I I feel the opposite way. I think that an efficiency study, I, I have full confidence in, in an efficiency study being done in each of our individual departments so that we can figure out, you know, what needs to be done, what needs to be done to make that department more efficient. And I feel like bringing a city manager in here and having a kind of a roadmap already laid out. Well, here's, here's the things that we need in this department. Here's what we need in this department. Here's what we're lacking here. I, I feel like having somebody come into that position and kind of having a little bit of a roadmap is, is going to be a lot better than having somebody come in doing an efficiency study before they're ready for it. And that's going to take a solid amount of time as well when, when we could utilize an efficiency study now. So I just, I, I, I just wanted to comment as well that I, I feel like it would be the opposite. I would prefer to have a city manager come in, see our strategic plan, and then look at a previous efficiency study and go, okay, here's the areas I can lean into.
So I just want to make a quick comment on what, uh, Councilwoman Zaburski and Councilman Hanon are talking about. My thing is, I believe if we go out for RFP right now, by the time everything is said and done, we're going to have a city manager before the efficiency study is done anyway. So that's just my thought. Councilman, um, oh, Mendoza, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I understand, uh, Councilman Hanon's concern. But I look at it as an opportunity to find out who has integrity and who doesn't if you're not doing your job because the city manager isn't here. You should be knowing what you're, you should be doing with or without leadership here. We have department heads. We have Lydia here as acting city manager. And I think all the players are in place to do your job and do your job efficiently. And if that's not being done, this is what this is supposed to identify.
Councilman Hanon.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, I, I sort of take solace in the fact that, uh, hopefully we'll have somebody by then. Whether, um, we do it before or after, I, I think that what we're looking for in a city manager is someone who's going to sort of solve some of our problems and take control of, of what we have going on here and have the expertise and the knowledge to address some of these things maybe without a study. But I think that, uh, sort of neck and neck, and let's hope it works out that way. And I'm just kind of sort of yield back to you. But, uh, my hope is that it works out that way, and, uh, thank you very much for sharing that.
Councilman Mendoza, if there's no further questions.
Yep. I'd like to move, uh, to direct staff to prepare and issue a request for proposal to conduct a government efficiency study of every department within the City of Fernley specifically, but not limited to operational efficiency, fiscal responsibility, service delivery, transparency and accountability, and long-term sustainability. And to return to council with a minimum of, but not limited to three firms to provide that detailed assessment.
I'll second that.
Was that also to include, uh, in this RFP, somebody that is within, knows the attorney's situation? Would, would that be included in what you just said?
Yes, that would be included into that. And if they aren't unable to efficiently do a study on a single department for lack of experience, then those people will not be chosen.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Mendoza, seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Okay. We, we could do the vote, and if I could just make a comment so that there's clarification on stuff.
Yeah. All right, um, please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I just wanted to put this in the record so staff could, uh, review it later. But, um, for operational efficiency, evaluate current processes, staffing levels, department structures to identify opportunities for improved, improved workflows, reduced redundancy, and streamlined decision-making. In regards to fiscal responsibility, to conduct a full review of expenditures to identify areas of waste, duplication, or non-essential spending, recommend cost-saving strategies that may not, uh, that do not compromise the delivery of core city services. Service delivery. Assess whether the city is meeting service benchmarks in an area such as public safety, infrastructure, permitting, and community programs. Compare performance against peer municipalities in similar size and growth. In regards to transparency and accountability, to ensure findings and presented publicly in clear, actionable reports. Create measurable benchmarks so that community can track progress and hold leadership accountable. Long-term sustainability, provide recommendations to position Fernley for future growth, leveraging technology partnerships, and best practices. Just.
So that's just a comment that you're making?
Just a comment that I'm making, uh, to clarify the intentions of my.
Councilman Mendoza, if you would, would you mind sending me that in an email so I have that on my desk?
I sure will.
Thank you, sir. Did we vote? Oh, no, we, yeah, we voted, okay. Okay, uh, let's see, where are we at? We're going to move on to line item 8.2. Discussion, possible action to approve a reclassification to administrative specialist to, to utility project coordinator.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor and acting city member, manager, excuse me. Mix, I'm nervous, very nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Mitzi Carter, HR Manager for the City of Fernley, for the record. Tonight, I'm presenting this request for council's approval of reclassification of the administrative specialist two to become the project coordinator position within the utilities department under the direction of Song Kim, Utilities Director. Can we go back to the first slide? Please. Thank you. The beginning of this narrative is to give council the history of why this reclassification request, request, excuse me, is being presented before you this evening. On August 23rd, 2023, an admin specialist one in the utilities billing department was hired. In 2025, the inception, the inception, oh, inception of the new utilities department, the director determined that the administrator specialist two was needed to provide support for the clerical administration within the growing department. At administrative specialist two was posted internally in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, section two, personnel rules and regulations pertaining to the bargaining unit vacancies, which states vacancies as determined by the city to exist, which lasts more than 30 days, shall be posted on the bulletin board for a period of five workdays. Two internal candidates applied and were interviewed. One candidate withdrew. The other candidate had satisfied the prerequisites of the position description, fulfilled the requirements involved in being promoted per the City of Fernley policies procedures, excuse me, personnel policies and procedures, section 3.21. Promotions that state an employee must be within the city, with the City of Fernley for a minimum of one year to be eligible for promotion opportunities outside of the current division. The candidate having met all the requirements of the internal candidate was promoted on March 17th, 2025. Next slide, please. Thank you. Based on the rapid growth of the utilities department, the administrative specialist duties and responsibilities quickly expanded and extended beyond the normal scope of the work for administrative specialists two. Slide, please. Next slide, please, thank you. Slide three illustrates the department creation, operational growth, position development, and the inception of the reclassification. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the City of Fernley's personnel policies and procedures, section four, position classification plan, which defines the framework for organizing and defining all the City of Fernley's positions to ensure consistency, fairness, and alignment with organizational directions. Next slide, please. This slide dives deeper into systematic framework, management alignment, standardization, and fair classification for the City of Fernley's position. Next slide, please. HR became involved in conducting a classification study to ensure the reclassification request was warranted. This was done in accordance with City of Fernley's personnel policies and procedures, section four, position classification plan, and sections 4.1.5, reclassification numbers 4.1.5.1 through 4.1.5.4. Okay, so next slide, please. Once the position description was created, capturing the expanded duties, the salary was created based upon the mid-range salary for the administrative specialist three and to allow growth within the classification. It was also determined that the administrative specialist two would not be backfilled and the duties would be absorbed within the project coordinator position. Slide seven shows that the finalization draft for, did I lose my place? Yes, no, I didn't. The finally, finalized draft for the project coordinator was then sent to the IBW Local 1245 Business Agent. And in accordance with the CBA, section one, recognition, bargaining unit representative and section scope of bargaining unit, which states, "For the purpose of collective bargaining as defined in NRS 288, the city shall recognize the union as the exclusive representative for those classifications set forth in Appendix A. Specifically, new classifications which are appropriate for the inclusion in the bargaining unit may be established in the future and representation shall be automatic after establishment of the new classification." Classification rate, excuse me. Next slide, please. Slide eight shows the beginning of the position description that was negotiated in good faith with the City of Fernley and IBW Local 1245. Next slide, please. Excuse me. This slide contains the IBW Business Agent's designation that the proposed reclassification of that position was approved by marking yes in the designated area and with his signature dated September 12, 2025. Last slide. Thank you. In closing, thank you for your time and consideration for all the presented material and items to support the approval of the reclassification of the administrative specialist two to become the project coordinator position within the utilities department. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilwoman Zaburski and then Councilman Mendoza.
I don't necessarily have a question, but thank you for the presentation. I've, I'm still nervous being down there and talking more than I am up here. So I feel like it's just nerve-wracking and I think it's the height or something. It's, it's uncomfortable. And also, thank you for communicating with the, the union, um, with this position so that we don't run into anything down the line.
Yes, I, I'm putting in place a, a quality check that I'm having them approve it, sign it, or deny it, and then ask why, you know, provide the denial. So they're very open to that. So it kind of puts a check in the box that we're following procedures in CBA.
Yeah, being able to see the timeline like that, I think, makes me feel a lot more comfortable as far as reclassifying anything than if we're just going, oh, she does more, so we're, we're going to give her this title and this pay scale. So I, I appreciate the slides and, and the timeline that you have set out for reclassification as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Yeah, if I heard you correctly, uh, there was a a listing for this position that internal employees were able to apply for, and that took place.
Yes, initially. The reclassification, it actually does not state in the policies procedures that it has to automatically go to the person, the incumbent. It can be put out for, but it, it's just a general, it says it can be, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay. This will be a a question for our city attorney, and hopefully we could get an answer from him. But in regards to NRS 288, when there's a change to a contract within mid-contract, don't both parties have to agree to open up that contract?
And are you talking about that in terms of the MOU?
I'm talking about that in terms to reclassifying a position and adding it to the CBA.
Aaron Morton, City Attorney. We're, those are two separate issues. Um, in terms of when it talks about the changes to the contract, it's discussing changes to the MOU. In this case, the MOU has a process, um, for making those changes. And if the union signs off on it and, um, the city agrees to it, then it goes, then it goes through, does not require those changes. The same contractual requirements. Does that answer the question?
Not really. I, I think we're missing a, a key here. Like, I understand we're doing our due diligence with sending the reclassification and getting approval from the local, uh, to approve these reclassifications. But I, I But I I I feel like we're missing something with the proper process of opening up a government CBA. And adding language into a contract. If it's not in the form of a MOU and we're reclassifying or adding a new position. That needs to be opened up and added into the CBA.
So, so Mitzi, could you pull the PowerPoint back up again?
Um, that was slide.
It's four point one, five from the top. I think it says, I think it's six. It's six or seven on there.
It was slide seven, I believe, the recognition of the bargaining unit. So the language says that new classifications which are appropriate for the inclusion of the bargaining unit. May be established in future and representation shall be automatic after establishment of the new classification and rate. So this is adding another classification into appendix A or, and it's not changing any of the language of the CBA itself.
That's correct. And that, and that if you look at that and then I think if you look back.
Okay, that's what I needed to read.
On six.
That's, yeah, that that explains it to me. So I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yep, we got more questions. Uh, Councilman.
I don't have any more questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
Same here.
Okay, uh. Councilman Mendoza, did you have comment more further? Okay, uh, Councilman Hanon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the reclassification of the administrative specialist two position to the utilities project coordinator with the job description and salary range as presented.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Hanon, seconded by Councilman Lau. If there are no further discussions, please vote. Who didn't vote? Oh, he just did. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman and Mayor. Have a good evening.
Uh, we will go on to line item eight point three, discussion possible action regarding counseling the July 1st. 2026 city council meeting due to city of Fernley 25th anniversary event. This was brought forward by Councilman Hanon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we've had our first meeting um, last week. And we've identified quite the um. Quite the workload on the city and staff. Um, events start early in the day on Wednesday and I think it would be, um, I I spoke with our clerk. About trying to reschedule that meeting so that we didn't have to break from the events and come over here and have our meeting and pull staff away. Um, the following Wednesday, uh, there were uh, planning commission and some other um, items that interfered with rescheduling. Unless the council has a a better day or opinion to reschedule, I would request that we cancel this appointment. Uh, this, I'm sorry, this meeting because of those events and they are from the first through the fifth. And they, like I said, they start on the first in the morning and I know all of us want to be participating in the 25th anniversary events. There's quite a bit. Um, and we're very excited about what's coming, so. If there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, do we have any um? Any further discussion on this, Councilman Torres?
Um, I like the idea. I just don't know if. Canceling 10 months out is a little too early.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Hanon?
Uh, we can get you a list of the events and when they start. Um, and when we're proposing, it starts in the morning. And there's a series of events back to back to back that go all day into the evening um, on all of those days, the first through the fourth. Um, we talked about doing a light schedule or a light meeting. But again, we all have to leave the events and come here. Uh, the staff will be working in in that capacity with the 25th anniversary event. There's, it's pretty staff intensive. And um. Just some preliminary discussion was that it's going to be a problem. So unless the events are canceled or somehow rescheduled. But as of right now, they start in the morning on the first. Like I said, and go through to the uh, fourth, which is a Saturday, Wednesday through Saturday.
Councilman um, Torres?
It's not the events for the Fourth of July that I'm concerned about. It's. The regular business or if we have something. I'm just worried like we're gonna cancel something, we're gonna have something major. It's the. Brand-new budget year. And I just, I don't know if 10 months is too far out to counsel, to counsel something. Um. Not because of the events, but because we don't know what projects may need to be heard that, that day. So it, that that's just a concern, you know, is it 10 months too early? Can we, like, we can cancel at any time, right? Um. Can we look at, you know, maybe four months out and then we know what projects are coming out? We know how, we have a better idea of what budget's gonna look like. I just don't know if a year, close to a year out is just super early. And I mean, our number one priority is what happens up here, not the events.
Councilman Hanon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I appreciate what you're saying. I mean, we always have the ability, if there's something pressing, to add it back to an agenda item on any particular day that we choose. We may choose to do it on a Tuesday if there was an emergency so that it didn't interfere with those events. I was just trying to lessen the burden on city staff and the council and the mayor. To be able to focus on the large 25th anniversary event that we're planning. Uh, we can always add it back if there's something pressing. We can add anything to the agenda or create any meeting at any particular time. So I would ask that um. I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's any more.
If there's no further discussion, um. Go ahead, Councilwoman Zaburski.
I, that sounds like a pretty good compromise. Can we do five months beforehand and then visit this and then just see where we're at instead of scheduling it so far out?
Okay, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to table this to the um, January, the first meeting in January. And um, we'll discuss it then. If I have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilman Hanon to table this until the ga- the meeting in January. Seconded by Councilwoman Zaburski. Please vote if there's no further discussion. Motion carries five zero. We'll now move on to line item nine, public forum, this portion of the meeting voted public. If you wish to comment, you can do so. In person at the meeting, raise your hand, featured in Zoom, star nine, if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom? Ms. Watson, is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Nobody on the phone? Okay, our next meeting will be October 15th at 5:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned.